All right, we can pledge allegiance. But I'm just going to be honest with you right here. Oh, you're going to call me the other day. It's the town sergeant. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, now this is it.
Uh, yeah.
Is that yours?
Yes.
Sorry. She'll do the roll call for us. She'll do the roll call for us. Okay. Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order at seven o'clock. I'd like to welcome everybody to the College of Finance Time Meeting. Town Sergeant, would you be so kind as to give the emergency evacuation plan, please?
Yes, in case there's an emergency, there's two exits up in the front, in the center, and out in the rear. Just follow the exit signs and take you right outside. Thank you.
At this time, I would ask that everybody rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Town Sergeant, if you would lead us with that.
Aye. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'd like to introduce our moderator, Mr. Edward Edman. The meeting's yours, thank you.
Okay, we're going to proceed. First and foremost, I'm going to go over the ground rules for the meeting, and I'll go through those now. All questions and comments will be directed through the moderator, that's myself. All question and comments must be related in germane to budget issues. I will rule you, direct you towards budget issues. There is a three-minute time limit for registered voters, so if in fact you come up to speak, you have to have the green band as a registered voter. All present must maintain the decorum of the chamber. We're going to allow people to speak, and then if you would like to speak again after the three minutes, you have to go to the back of the line as well. No voting will take place on the budget this evening per the Home Rule Charter that was passed in 2018, November of 2018. Voting will take place June 13th at five polling places from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. The specific question is provided in the handout for you. The, at this time, I'd like to call in Town Manager Edwazika for his presentation. Please proceed.
Thank you. Cody, first slide, please. Yeah, okay. Sorry about that, but you've all got this in your presentation that we gave you. This is a breakdown of the actual totals on the budget. We have a total combined budget of $108,150,086. Should we open? Of that, the breakdown is $29,310,627 towards the municipal side, $47,78,589 on the school side, with a total appropriated school budget of $73,406,698. There is $5,232,761 in debt service, and there is a $200,000 appropriation for capital improvements, which is earmarked for the school department this year. I'm not going to take a lot of time. I've got the numbers. You also have a budget, the line, the summary budget in the back of this as well.
Mr. Wazika, I'm just going to take one moment, just to do some housekeeping for one moment. I'm going to officially open the meeting, and the meeting is now officially open. Please proceed.
Thank you. With this proposed budget that I have, it amounts to a 2.92% tax increase and a 3.47% tax levy increase. There's always a difference between these two numbers. The tax increase is what you're actually looking at in causing the increase in your taxes. There's a difference between the levy increase and the tax rate increase because there's always property and buildings that either get upgraded or new buildings come into the system, and we have to, we have to end or begin the new levy year at the same rate that we ended at the previous year. So if we add in the equivalent of, say, $700,000 worth of tax value on properties, we have to drop that back down, which in turn would actually lower your starting tax rate. But that's why you see a slight difference on those two. I proposed from the previous budget, there's $150,000 in cuts on the municipal side, $350,000 in cuts on the school side, and an increase of the $200,000 in the revolving capital account, as I said, earmarked for the school this year. This will produce a tax rate approximately, because there's always a little bit of float before we finalize the levy. And that comes out to $22.24 on the residential side, or a 63 cent per thousand increase over the previous year. The commercial rate is projected at 26.81 for an increase of approximately 76 cents a thousand over last year. The, the commercial rate, the, excuse me, the tangible rate is the 22.24 as well, and the motor vehicle rate is 18... 18.75, the same as it's been for years. Cody, can I have the last, actually, you know what? I'm going to end it with this. I'm going to make this short and sweet, and I'll be available for any questions in reference to the proposal after the school does their side. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to call in the school superintendent for his presentation.
Thank you. So we'll make ours quick also. At the last meeting that most, many of us attended, when the town council put forward a budget, we met, our administrative team, the following day and the next few days to come up with how would we offset the $350,000. Can you go to the next slide, please? So, first position we're looking at is a position we're requesting, the new dean at the middle school, that's $80,000. And then the supervisory assistants, I know there's been confusion, these are not administrators. There were two positions at the middle school, two positions at the high school. The total cost for those four positions was $64,000. The next is anticipated two kindergarten teachers. That's based on enrollment. Our numbers, right now, our numbers would warrant us reducing by two kindergarten, and that's a total of $161,000. The reduction of, currently I have an interim, there's an interim secretary for the superintendent, that permanent position, we're going to reduce that by $12,000. We're looking at a reduction of elementary and middle school clubs, a total reduction of $40,000 between both the elementary and the middle school. And then finally, a .4 high school LEA position, which is someone that would help chair IEP meetings. I know there was conversation last meeting, any child that has an IEP, all their needs will be met. So I wanted to make sure that people understand that. This isn't going to impact, this is how we will facilitate meetings, and we can make this reduction. So that's a total of $390,469. We looked at the $200,000 for capital, and we'll utilize that, we have to go with, you know, obviously present that to the school committee, and also look at our estimates that are coming in, and really look at the two in terms of what's the priority emergency need. They're both needed for our NEASC recommendation, they've been recommended to be repaired. So the HVAC system or the high school main gym floor. Next slide. And this is important, just to know that we're still dealing with the loss of tuition revenue. We have potentially students that are tuitioning into our career tech school. Our career tech director, Ms. Ferguson, sent a letter out to the families, they were concerned. And I, you know, depending on what happens, you know, there's a potential of losing revenue there, 15,000 to 16,000 per student. Increase of auto district tuition costs, those are for career tech programs like Warwick, Ponte Gansett. We have over 14 new applications, probably closer to 20 right now. My understanding is some of those are like safety net, people have put in just in case things don't work out with the budget, and they want to have options. Those are 15,000 to 16,000 dollars a student. I put on here the librarian at the middle school. Last year, we cut a librarian, and I tell people it wasn't one of my best decisions, but we didn't have many options. We had to reduce our budget by 1.4 million. We're still in negotiation in terms of how we have to meet that need. So I put that on there just for the community to understand, that's something we still have to address. We had removed, when we put the budget together, there was a request for some specialized positions that were potential, there may be a need for those, depending on student need, and we have to recognize that those totaled 193,000, and that's going to be based, again, on student need. Students with individual education plans, students that have been identified as having a special education disability, they will be provided the resources they need. So we just need to make sure the community is aware of that. Then we also know that we have an increase in need for one, our programs, that's going to be about $100,000. And then finally, we still don't know what the state aid will finally be in terms of what gets finally approved for the budget. Next slide. And obviously, this is the obvious, but again, encouraging everybody, you know, whichever way you vote, but encouraging people to get out and to vote. And that's all I have.
Thank you. At this time, it's appropriate for public comment. We have microphones to the left and the right. Just come up front, state your name, and you have a three-minute time limit. Show me your green band, and we're ready to roll. You've got one. Three minutes.
Andrew R. Prenter. I have her driver's license, and Catherine McCarty.
You also win a door prize, congratulations. Please proceed. Would you like to speak? Yes, please proceed.
I have, my name is John R. Assalon, Sixth Veronica Court. I have four questions, no speeches.
Okay.
And I'm honored to be again at the Make Believe Financial Town Meeting. Okay, first question. On the 5 million debt, that's to pay the debt, is that correct? That's not our indebtedness? If not, what is our indebtedness now? Bond issues, or the mortgage that I don't think anybody knows about over on the old school for 1.5 million that was taken out?
We'll get you an answer right now. Total debt service, total debt.
The total debt? My brain is driving away. You got it?
The 5 million is the debt servicing, or the servicing of the debt. That is between the school side and the town side. That is a combined debt service for all of it, not including the sewer enterprise fund.
Bond issues, per se? That includes that, the payment on that debt?
On bond issues? That swim, almost all the debt is, is bond issues. That's what it's formed by, that's...
Okay, and what would the debt be if you know?
What was the what, John?
What were the town debt? What are the taxpayers in debt for? What is the town debt? How much do we owe?
It's $5 million in general obligation.
Did you hear that? $5 million in general obligations.
$5 million in general obligation. It's John Arnett, Finance Director. $5 million in general obligation debt.
So that's the total debt of the town, it's $5 million. I disagree strongly.
That's just a piece of it, John. No. That's one, that's one. That's one. We, John, we don't have it all totaled up at this point. I mean, I can get it to you, and I will put it out there tomorrow. What, some of the bonds that it includes, off the top of my head, is there is a, there was a $10 million road construction bond. There was over $10 million in bonds that were done a few years ago for school maintenance. There was a $5 million bond that was issued for energy, energy reduction. There was a $5 million bond and change for garbage collection. There was, they're still, we're still paying on one of, on the school, there's still school bond debt that's included in that. And, yeah, the latest ones. We have 12 million in the latest debt, which is for the DHSPD complex, and that...
How about the debt on the school across from the town hall that the treasurer put on us before he left town? What is that in there?
That was, I believe, it was 1.25 million dollars, and that was, if I'm not mistaken, it was a 10-year payback on that, and so there's still probably, I think, five years left. Yeah, five years left.
Does that satisfy your questions?
To the school committee...
Okay, so we're getting close to three minutes, but please proceed.
Why don't I list my questions, and then, okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
My other three questions are, one was indebtedness, two, so it's clear with everyone, if this budget happens to fail, you can go back for a new budget, how soon?
It'll take, the process is, yeah, 20, about 20 days, three weeks is what the rounding about that I've been using.
About three weeks?
Correct.
Okay. So that's, everyone thinks can be clear on...
So that's going to push us beyond July 1st, which pushes us into a, by statute, we will go to a zero increase budget. Okay, because of that, and because of the timeframe involved and the unknowns on whether or not the next budget will get passed, we will be forced to assume that we are going to run the entire year on that zero-based budget. To do anything less is going to be fiscal, would be fiscally foolish to do that, to plan the money that we do not have. So the budget is, the plan is projected to deal with a zero increase, and all of the cuts and reductions that are associated with that to bring that spending down. We have obligations that have to be met. Bond payments have to be made, pension payments have to be made, medical, all of the mandatory costs that we have have to be met. If they don't, if they aren't met, then we have the possibility of the municipal stability, Financial Municipal Stability Act kicking in, and the state coming in and taking over. And I put comments about that.
Next question, John?
To the school president, is that Ms. McDonald up there?
Yeah.
Treasurer?
Yeah.
Finance Director?
Yes, I am, Mrs. Mandrelli.
Did we not have a, not off the record conversation, just a conversation, that this budget, or this kind of spending in the school department is unsustainable? Did we not have that discussion? And did you not tell me that it was unsustainable?
I have stated numerous times that both at the state level funding, as well as our expenditures, school and townwide are not sustainable without changes. Yes.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate that. And based on that...
Yes. 30 seconds, John.
I think it's time for dramatic change, and I think the only way that's going to come is to reject this budget. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Other speakers, if you'd like to come down, we have microphones to my left and to the right. Please step right up and state your name and show us your green band. Please proceed.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Douglas Aldrich.
Okay.
And that's at 17A, Pop and John Lane. Seventeen, letter A, Pop and, P-O-P-P-I-N, John Lane.
Well, good, please proceed.
I noticed in the last voting that police pensions was listed as blank. Is that going to be funded this year?
Police pensions is, that's your question on the police pensions?
Police, yes, police pensions are funded, they're funded every year. If we fail to fund those, we would have an issue with the state. So we are obligated to meet the ARC. This year, it is in excess of $5 million, and that has to be funded. That's one of those costs I explained, that we will fund no matter what happens with this budget, we have no option.
Well, I was curious because...
Yeah, overall, all the pension arcs will be met, because we have to.
Well, that particular line was left blank...
Okay.
On the last handout we had for the election.
Okay, thank you. So, did you want to have an opportunity to speak? Okay. Please state your name and address.
Nick Zemirelli, 11 Wesleyan Avenue. I gave my word that I would come here and speak this evening on behalf of the schools, and I will do that, but first I want to talk about home. I lived in and out of Coventry for several years from 1979 through 1986, and in 1988, I came back, and I've been here ever since. I won't lie to you, when I first came to Coventry in 1979, I hated it. First, I didn't even know where it was. I lived in northern Rhode Island, Johnston-Smithfield area, and when my family told me we were moving to Coventry, I said, "Where's that?" And, but after a while, it grew on me, as it has grown on so many. If you take a look at, and I haven't crunched these numbers, so I can't give you exact figures, but it's staggering, the number of current teachers who graduated from this school system. That has to speak volumes, when you have so many people who have had their lives influenced so positively that they decide to put down roots here. In some cases, they never leave, and they feel so strongly about it that they want to work here in town. And I suspect that's not just teachers. I suspect that's other town employees as well. And while I'm about it, I don't think we have to pass this budget just to save school programs. I think we have to pass this budget for the sake of the entire town, because as a totally blind man, I have to tell you that I feel safe here, and I wouldn't if I lived other places. And that's stunning, for a man without sight to be able to feel confident and safe in his own home is, it's extraordinary. And there are so many people here in this town today who deserve credit for that. So it's not, yes, I'm a teacher, yes, I would like to save my job, and I'm a music teacher, so I'm a little concerned, and I'd like to save those programs for the children. But I'd also like to save that wonderful feeling...
Just 30 more seconds, please.
I would like to save that wonderful feeling of home that I now have, that I did not have when I first got here in 1979. And in closing, I want to tell you about a family who moved here last year from Pennsylvania. The father took a job at the Hasbro Toy Company. The two children are at Washington Oak School. One is in third grade, one is on her way to middle school. They are two of the finest children I have ever had. People still come from all around to be a part of what we have here. Pass this budget.
Thank you. Any other? Other speakers, come on down, sir. I'm gonna, just, he'll go first and you can go second. You can stay right up here if you'd like.
Charles Varker, 124 Fairway Drive. I think we need, first of all, I will preface my comments, I think we need to reject the budget because we need to do things much differently in this town. So my question to the municipal side, and my question to the school side is, in approximate numbers, I'm not going to hold you down to the last penny, even though I might want to, what are your projections for the next three years on spending and tax increases? Because I think everybody here would like to hear those numbers and make their own decisions based on what lies in the future. I know I would.
First, first, Mr. Varker, projecting we're going to need next year, the year after, the year after that, and the year after that, there's a lot of external factors that come into play in that, so we don't know at this point. We don't know what all of those increased costs are going to be, what medical cost increases are going to be there. We don't know what costs that could occur on the pensions. We don't know what kind of cost for heat, gas, oil. All of these factors come into play on trying to determine an appropriate budget. So the further out we go, the more difficult it becomes to try and give exact numbers. I can sit here and say, "We're going to give you a zero increase for the next three years," or I could say, "We're going to give you a 4%," or request a 4% increase for the next three years. Either one could be right, or they could be wrong. I can't give you an exact number. What we try and we strive for, the lowest possible, if not keeping it at zero. Unfortunately, with increased costs that affect both sides of the house, we've got to deal with those. So to sit here and give a number and then have that number used back at us in two years from now, it just isn't appropriate for me to respond that way, because I don't know. I don't know those unknowns that we're facing, that we're coming to. So without those... facing, that we're coming to. So, without those, I'm just guessing. So, if you want to guess, I'll give you, we're going to give it two percent. I'll take the middle, and we'll go with that. But that's the best I can do because we don't know where we're going to be. And I'm not going to lie about it.
We have approximately thirty seconds. Was there a follow-up question, or?
Well, I'd like to hear from the schools, but my follow-up question is, does the municipal side as well as the school department side, do we have a financial plan in the future? Everybody out here in the crowd, by the way, everybody out here, including myself, we know what our anticipated increases are going to be in the future in our household expenses and costs. And I think the town should know that as well.
Time out. Okay, so, please maintain the order of the chamber. Okay, so, let's take your question. We've got about ten seconds to answer it, then we'll move on. And if you'd like to speak again, you're welcome to come up at here.
I'd like to know if there's a financial plan...
We've got the question, we're going to move forward.
So, do we have a five-year plan as far as what we think our contractual expenditures are going to be, what we ballpark our insurance rates to be? Yes. But as I mentioned to Mr. Asmone, part of the reason that this is unsustainable also has to do with the funding formula at the state level. The two previous years, we lost a combined $900,000 in state aid. So, it's great that we're at 1.6, but that system in and of itself is not a sustainable system, nor can we plan. I put together at the beginning of this budget process several communities that had over a million-dollar swings in three years. That in and of itself is almost impossible to plan a budget when we don't know what that state aid is coming through. Additionally, we had a 12.5% increase in healthcare rates, whereas previous years we had a three to seven percent. So, we can do our best estimates, but there are certain factors that are above and beyond our control which all play into this. As far as rejecting the budget, I understand the concerns that this community needs to do better. I understand that the state needs to do better, but we can't throw the baby out with the bathwater. We still need to function as a community and work through these problems together, but simply not funding operations is not going to help us move anything further.
Okay, thank you. We'll have an opportunity...
We are funding your budget. If we reject the budget, we will level fund you and will give you the same amount that you're getting this year, but not getting zero.
Thank you. Next speaker, please proceed.
Mike Tedeschi, 662, T-E-D-E-S-C-H-I, 662 Perry Hill Road. I was born, raised, went to school, graduated in 1980, reside and work in Coventry. I've been employed by the town for seventeen years. Majority of those years have been spent working for parks and recreation. For the past two years, I've been the working foreman here in my hometown of Coventry. Based on my experience working within the department, there's a reason why it's called parks and recreation. Both sides need to be in place for an efficiently running department. You can't drain the oil from an engine and expect the vehicle to run. Department maintains twenty-five athletic fields, eight basketball courts, eight tennis courts, community center, numerous bathroom facilities, parking lots, five miles of Greenway, memorial areas such as Anthony Green, the Causeway, 102 Memorial, and thirty-five properties. This is a small piece of what we actually maintain with the staff we have. It would be impossible to maintain all these areas without an office staff to sift through the prioritized issues pertaining to preventive maintenance, unexpected issues such as trees on the Greenway, vandalism, property damage, safety hazards, the list goes on and on. We need the expertise and recreation staff to order the appropriate supplies, make sure payroll is done, schedule safety trainings, set up vendor accounts, schedule and organize leagues on fields and courts, and assist with grant reporting requirements. The department's operating budget does not provide us with enough funding to purchase the necessary maintenance equipment and supplies to effectively function. Our maintenance staff depends on money collected from program fees to acquire everything from infield mix, cleaning supplies, trucks, commercial riding mowers. We use this equipment to help collect garbage from all facilities that we maintain, all the properties and fields, and assist DPW with plowing in the winter. We plow the police station, food bank, town hall annex. We have our own road roof, community center. We put emergency access to waterways in Tyke Lake. In my personal view, I would hope the majority of the residents share my opinion, eliminating recreation out of the parks would be disastrous to the community. Why would you choose not to attract new business and more families to Coventry by maintaining a strong parks and recreation department? Cut the recreation side out of the department, which is less than one percent, it's actually .7% to eliminate the recreation. It's one percent of the town's overall budget. It's not going to solve the big money issue that we have. It'll only make them worse for many years to come.
Thank you. Other speakers, please proceed to the microphone if anybody else would like to have an opportunity to speak. Are there any other individuals that would like, well, I will get back to the second timers as soon as we have the, did you want to speak? Please proceed. Just show us your green band and tell us who you are.
My name's Carol Smith, and I'm from Seven Cynthia Drive, Carol Smith. Yeah, Seven Cynthia Drive. I don't think it's about eliminating the smaller pieces, the one percent. The teacher budget substantiates everything that we do regarding the tax base. We need to talk to the teachers, just like we would talk to employees and say, "There's an amount that people can afford to increase their taxes by." Because every time we do a union agreement with them, we're, we are in contract with that, and then the financial plan comes out. And the only way to manage forward with that is that they get their raises, and we have to take from other areas of the budget. When I worked, I know people say it's not a company, but when I worked for a company and the company wasn't doing well or couldn't afford it, my pay was associated with that, or my layoff, or whatever. I appreciate that teachers are valuable, but the one thing, I raised three children here, and I didn't always vote for the budget. But the fact is, a child is more than just an education. They are clothing, they are feeding them, they are taking them places, putting gas in your car to get there. So, upping the rates to your tax base based on the fact that these teachers are the most important things in their lives is not true. They are important, but they aren't the be-all, end-all. And we need to start negotiating at a fair rate for what teachers are paid as well as the benefits that they receive. Many people in the community now, at the businesses they work, do not receive the benefits that these people have been receiving. And overtime should be diminished and take responsibility for it.
Other speakers that have not had an opportunity, please, sir, come on down.
James Kuipers, K-U-I-P-E-R-S, 20 Ginger Trail. Good evening.
Good evening.
A couple of questions, mainly to clarify, and I guess to Mr. Wazika. I just looked at a calendar. You said it would take approximately three weeks if the budget were rejected to hold another referendum. That puts us at July 4th. I'm guessing that we're not going to have a referendum on July 4th.
Correct.
So, you stated that puts us past July 1st. So, as of July 1st, if this budget is rejected, you would have to make the cuts and put them in place as of that date to operate on a level-funded budget. Is that correct?
Correct. We would have to operate on the same, same revenue that we have this year, same rate. So, there'd be no additional. And we have to use one-twelfth of it per month going through until we actually get a voter-approved budget. And we keep going back and keep going back until we get that.
Okay, so, one other, thank you. One other question, I'm not sure, this might be to anybody and everybody up there. Have you talked about if you have to come back with another revised budget, if this budget were rejected Thursday? Have you talked about whether that's going to be a budget with another cut, or are we coming back at that point just to get level funding and be done?
That's something that the council would have to sit and discuss. I don't think it would be appropriate to try and come up with an answer now. I'm confident that come Friday morning, we won't have to worry about that. I'm really hoping that this isn't the case. But I'd rather not get into that kind of discussion unless the council wants to. But I think at this point, I don't think we should.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Vokker. Other speakers that have not had an opportunity to speak that would like to speak, or I'll go to the second round of individuals. Please proceed, sir.
My name is William. I'm on the 800 Hope Furnace Road. I got a question for the school department. Teacher certification, all the other counties and towns get $1,500. Coventry teachers get $7,000. If you want to cut the budget, you cut that $7,000, you got $2 million less. You people always put in the paper, "Oh, we got to cut the kids' program." When are you going to cut the teachers' salaries? You guys have no plan.
So, may I just ask what your specific question was? About a $7,000 issue, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Okay. Do you understand the question? Because I'm having a little trouble following it, but...
I'm just going to respond that at this point in time, we're in the middle of a teacher's contract that was voted on by both the school committee and the town council. So, we are obligated to fund that, which is why that budget is there. So, you can...
I'm not sure what you're talking about, the $7,000 for certification. So...
Teacher certification.
Well, they don't get paid $7,000 because they're certified. They require a certificate to be certified just to be a teacher. So...
Yeah, but they get paid for that, $7,000.
So, you're, no, no, you're talking about National Board Certified, and maybe twenty-some-odd teachers are National Board Certified. We have four hundred and fifty approximately teachers. So, I don't want to think that every teacher's getting $7,000. So, they have to have a certificate just to be licensed to be employed.
They get paid for it, too.
Okay, so, let's just, if you'd like to speak, come to the microphone. Do you have another question, sir?
Yes, I do. I'll come with a new question.
Sir, 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 may I thank you for your service to our country first.
You're welcome. I'm the youngest of eleven, and I have eight, seven brothers, and every one of them served in the service and had four in the Second World War at the same time. I've been paying taxes in the town since 1962, longer than most of these people were even born then. A new plan for the teachers. When you work in private industry, you don't get a pension after five years. You don't get, you got to work ten, fifteen, or twenty years before you start getting a pension.
Right, right. Again, we're just trying to keep germane to the budget at hand. Is there a specific question to that?
Yeah, why don't you just change it? What are you going to do to make it better?
I don't think that the actual pension is the jurisdiction of the school committee, but I'd allow them to...
Correct. So, the teachers are involved in a state pension plan. It's run by the state, so any pension reform is generated at the state level.
And they can't retire until age sixty-seven.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I chime in? I feel like the underlying problem is...
Hang on one second, hang on. Did you want to address a specific question? Is that what you're looking to do?
I do.
Please proceed.
Because I think the underlying question is...
Please state your name.
Luke Murray, school committee. I think the underlying question that goes to Carol's question, I believe it's Carol, is, you know, are we spending too much? And the truth is, we're going to look at all the avenues we have to, within the mandates and state laws that we have, to reduce the budget going into next year. What we can't do is just simply open up that contract and slash and burn things. We've made an obligation to the teachers that was approved in open form. This was, this was all in an open process. And if no one was a part of that process, we're sorry. But as far as those stipends and some of the things that you're talking about, it is in the contract now, and that's what we have to deal with. Moving forward, our hope is, as we look at programs and other things that we can work on, we hear you. That's what I want to say. We hear you. But what we can't do is change it between now and Thursday. We're looking to move ahead. That's all.
Thank you. Would you like to have an opportunity to speak, sir?
Mr. Moderator, if I may, just have something to say.
Absolutely, please proceed.
We are going to actively speak to all the organized labor contract people in the town this next coming year and ask them to open up their contracts and look at them so we'll have an easier go at next year. We're going to ask all the labor unions to do that for us. Thank you.
Please proceed, sir.
Excuse me, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Deb Bacon, town council. I just want clarification, though.
Sure.
The negotiation, the contract negotiations is not open. The only thing that is open is the vote, but the actual negotiations is not an open process.
Thank you.
I just wanted clarification.
Thank you. Please proceed, sir.
Kevin Toro, 20 Card Street. Kevin Toro, T-O-R-O, 20 Card Street. You beat me to the question about going back and asking the contracts to be opened up and maybe lower down a bit. Better? All right. Has the school department gone to the teachers and asked them if they would be willing to forego a raise since they start about $40,000 a year, so that everyone keep their job, level out the budget, and you can hire back the thirty people that you want to hire back?
Yeah. So, a couple of things is that, what I don't want is to make this a teacher issue. Have we, Mrs. Erinakis, who is sitting here in the audience, who's the president of the CTA, she and I work very hard together, and we talk, and I said this publicly, we talk almost every day. And we've had conversations, and that's where I kind of end. I was, it was, I was happy to hear Mr. McGee say that next year, looking at all of the bargain units, and like I said, all we can do is ask, but we've been working together as one town, you know, not lip service. If you look at everything that's going on in other communities, there's fighting. We're working together. And as Mrs. Manjore already said, we know that we need to look at a lot of changes moving forward. And so, that's what I'll say, that we've had conversations, but we're looking to, you know, in terms of next year, what we're going to do as a community. And it was, again, good to hear that Mr. McGee say, looking at all the bargain units in the community.
Did you have a follow-up or anything, sir?
Yes. What would be the consequence of voting no and having all these teachers laid off? Could we go back then and force the union to come to the table?
No, so, we can't, as of right now, we have a legal contract with the teachers' union that we are obligated to fund. I do have to add one more point, and keeping with the fact that this, the school committee and the town council and school and town administrators have worked tirelessly together, and I certainly don't want to pit union versus union, but I also want to note that in the past three contract years, the teachers' union has voluntarily taken a frozen in each of those three contracts at least one year, and they're the only union in the town that has done that. So, I think that when we're looking at this, we certainly have a large number of teachers in that union. We're the biggest section of the budget. But I, I think we need to look at all of the facts before we make statements. And again, I'm glad that we're all looking to work at this together.
Okay.
But let's be clear on this.
We're at the three-minute point, but I'll give you ten more seconds if you'd like to have an opportunity to say anything, sir.
Well, I commend the teachers for actually taking pay freezes on that. But they are starting off at a very high pay rate, almost close to the mid, the middle of the town residents, just to start coming out of college. So, I would say that would be a pretty well-paying job, although I know that they earn their money.
Okay. So, we're at that point. If you'd like to come back up...
Well, I'd like to address that.
Oh, hang on one second. Who's speaking? Just hang on for a minute. Are you all set, sir?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
No, I think it's important is, you know, this is a job. We're talking about people. So, when you're talking about teachers, you know, just to say, "Oh, we'll just lay them off," this affects real lives. And so, these are professionals who, some of them, I know it's hard to believe, are in demand. They will go to other districts. We're not that far ahead of the curve. If you look at the data, when we're talking about Coventry's over another school district, we're talking $500 out of their entire gross pay for the year, $1,000 on different steps. So, we're talking on the margins here, and I know specifically our career and tech programs, where we're trying to create pathways, they are in demand. There have been teachers already who have received job offers in other districts. So, you know, I'm not trying to scare anybody, but we are talking about people here. This isn't just budgets. And we are in a competitive industry because these are educated people who come to this town. So, we don't just look at salaries and throw them out there. We look at other districts. So, I just want people to look at the data, go to ride, look at other districts, and see what teachers are making. These people are in demand.
Thank you. Other speakers? Please proceed. State your name and address.
Carol Erinakis, 9 Sugar Maple Drive. E-R-I-N-A-K-E-S. So, I think one of the things that we're all forgetting here is how the budgets have come to pass to date. So, just like our own households, our oil goes up, our gas goes up, our phone bill goes up, our cable bill goes up, all of our bills in our own household go up. I think over the past ten years, and somebody will correct me if I'm wrong, the schools have been level-funded six of those ten years. So, when the costs in your home go up, and there's no increase to your budget, you can't continue to pay your bills. One of the reasons we're in the spotlight, we're... One of the reasons we're in the spot where we're in is a level funding. What we have to decide on now is are we gonna vote this budget down and level fund again? So, what will happen is the programs, both on the town and the school side, will be cut, whatever they are, whatever the powers that be decide, but you can't dig out of that hole because the bills every year are gonna keep accruing. So, what I hear both sides saying is they're looking for plans to sustain those bills and level them off, but we're in the hole we're in because a portion of the town was level funded. I don't like my property taxes going up either. I bought my first home in Coventry at 27. I'm pushing 50, unfortunately. It's not gonna change. My gas bill's not gonna go down. My electric bill's not gonna go down. My health insurance isn't gonna go down. That's the problem that we're in. I think Ms. Manjorelli, the finance director, talked about it. It's how the state funds the towns and the schools that's a larger problem. But if we sit here and think if we reject this budget, it's gonna make everything better, it's only going to make it worse because you've heard from Mr. Wazika, they're still gonna pay the pension debt obligation, they're still gonna pay this, they're still gonna pay that because they're legally obligated to do so. Just like if you don't pay your mortgage, you don't have a house. So, the problem we're facing is one of common sense at some point. We might not like that our bills go up every year, but if you don't pay them, eventually you lose everything. So, I ask that we all support this budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Please proceed, sir.
Hi, my name's Gary Block, B-L-O-C-K. Thank you.
Address, please.
Oh, sorry. 640 Nadi Oak Road. I apologize. This is the first time I've been to one of these meetings, and I've been a Coventry resident 20 years, so I've been remiss in that regard. Yep, I also apologize for my attire. I was actually playing basketball in the Coventry-sponsored men's basketball league tonight, so I'm a big fan. You probably don't want 20, 50-year-olds running rampant all over town if you cut the program, so. I had a question and a comment. Questions primarily of the school. What is the overall compensation on average for Coventry schoolteachers, taking into account health benefits and anything else that they may get as part of their employment?
So, a majority of our teaching staff is at top step, which has an $80,000 benefit, I'm sorry, salary rate. The average benefit package between, assuming again, family healthcare, is probably about another $25,000 to $30,000 on top of that.
So, the average teacher's making about $100?
Between salaries and benefits, yes.
Okay. I have children in this town. I've been very fortunate that I could actually send them to private school. They go to Rocky Hill because it's very convenient to her, my wife and I work. So, it would be in my best financial interest to limit how much I pay for this town budget. That said, if we as a community and as a society don't place the education of our children at the top of our to-do list, then I think we are failing our next generation. And I understand, and I can hear the frustration from many people here that whether true or not that there's issues that haven't been addressed, or mismanagement, or conflicts of interest, and I would hope that our elected officials do everything they can to come together and address these issues, but from my mind, you can't pay teachers enough because the most precious thing we all have is our children. Thank you.
Would you like to have an opportunity to speak?
Hi, thank you. Kimberly Schokley, 12 Kingswood Drive. As a member of the community, I had the opportunity to go to a meeting last night where I spoke to some of my neighbors who don't live in my neighborhood, and I learned a lot. I would like to ask, as we're sitting here lion-aiding, vetoing within the month that the budget actually went to vote, how many residents from town came to the meetings for both the town council in the south and the school committee?
During all the budget hearings?
Every meeting other than since May.
We held six budget meetings specifically for this, obviously, and we had an average of four to five people that showed up, and it was typically the same people that showed up. We also attempted prior to this whole budget process to do an educational forum, question and answer, that several department heads, myself, we gave up a Saturday, set up and advertised it to do the same thing, to answer all the questions about the budget process, explain what goes on, work with people to show them what it's all about.
I'm glad you have a chance to do your communications now.
We had four people show up. Again, the same four people that usually show up to all of our meetings, and it's disappointing because we go through a lot of work. There's a lot of situations that develop during these meetings. I know in the past, some people feel like their voice isn't heard at some of these council meetings. The fact of the matter is, especially with the change in the FTM format to the policy we're following this year, we went from two open meetings to six open meetings, and the reason for that is we were looking for input from the public. We wanted to hear what people wanted, what they didn't want, where they were going. We didn't get, we just didn't get the input that we needed. So, we're doing a budget based on what everything, what we look at, what we need, and we just didn't have that input this year that we need to. People need to be involved in this. Everybody wants to come out at the end of this and do it. It's too late at this process. Yes, you can vote it down. You can vote it down, and you can turn the town into a mess because that's what it's gonna be. I'm gonna be forced to do something on Friday morning that's gonna kill me. That's what we have to do if this budget is rejected. We do not have options. We have responsibilities, we have obligations that have to be met. You gotta show up, and you gotta voice your opinions before now. You need to be there and help us, assist us in developing what you want for your budget, for your town. It's our town. By "our," I mean us, not us, our town. We need you to be able to help us with that. Thank you.
30 seconds.
Does that count as my three minutes?
No.
30 seconds. That counts right into your minutes, but if you can talk fast, you get 30 seconds.
I also wonder if I read correctly that you are looking to put together committees to talk about, to lion-aid on the budget, to talk about the sewers consisting of the town councils and members of the community?
That is correct. We've heard what's going on. We've heard what you want. We want input. I'm not getting into meetings, so we're gonna try to form some subcommittees, some advisory committees to the town managers so we can come up with some better ideas and some better ways of doing things. And I'm looking for input, obviously, from the public. I'm looking for input from employees. Who knows better than what's going on than the people that are doing the job every day? So, yes, combining school committee, school department, town side, town council, and citizens to work towards getting to where we need to be and where we want to be.
If you...
And I'd just like to sign up for a committee at this open forum because I'm voting yes because I paid zero attention to this for the entire year, and I think right now it would be as if I asked my 10-year-old how we should spend our money. How much he understands about my budget is about the same as what I understand about the town's budget.
Okay. Thank you.
So, I'd like to sign up, and I hope other people do because as you can tell, I'm not a tax hawk, so you want me, you want to be there.
Thank you. Thank you. Please proceed.
Carrie Landry, 21 Circlewood Drive, Coventry. Circlewood Drive. L-A-N-D-R-Y. You're welcome. Well, first of all, I'd like to say that I am a teacher, a school teacher, and I've been teaching in Coventry for 18 years, serving our community. I was born in Coventry, raised in Coventry, and I'm very proud to be a part of our community. And I do mean that with all my heart. 18 years I've been teaching, and I am one of the 385 teachers that got a layoff slip. Do I take my job for granted? No, I don't. I put in lots of hours, long hours, and I'm not alone in that either. My job isn't just about creating lessons and engaging with students and like correcting assessments and then planning from that. It's also about forming bonds and relationships with the families in the community. It's helping those families to be the best that they can be. I have students that leave me. I teach at the middle school level. I have students that leave me years later and, or even just the next year and the year after, and they come back to me, or they email me, or they ask me for help with different things. I happen to be a special educator. So, a lot of my students who have, you know, special needs and different challenges, you know, they will reach out to me through the years, and I'm proud to say that a few of those have become teachers themselves. They've gone on and done really great things with their lives. And I am just one, one teacher that they've had along the way, and it's a puzzle. The entire, like their schooling, everything, the family is a part of who that person, you know, who they become, the school department is, the school, the teachers. I firmly, firmly believe it. It is so disheartening, I have to be completely honest with you, to read comments on the Coventry Town page. So disrespectful.
Timeout, John.
I'm not...
No, 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 John.
I'm not talking to you. I'm talking to everybody in general.
John.
So, I'm...
We're just gonna maintain the decorum of the chamber. You've got about 45 seconds.
In any case, yes. So, all I'm trying to say is that teachers do work really hard for the money that we do receive. I will say that, again, I've been teaching 18 years. In the past eight years, when I sit down and I file my taxes with my tax accountant, I have made an additional $1,500 in eight years. Eight years. And my tax accountant looks at me and says, "Carrie, you're crazy. Why are you teaching still?" And I say, "It's not because of the money," and it isn't because of the money. And I looked, I looked at contracts across the state because I did my homework, and if you go, it's, all of that information is there. The contracts are comparable.
10 seconds, please.
I'm proud to be a part of my union and have a union president that is willing to fight for fair wages for me and for my colleagues.
Thank you. Other speakers, other first-time speakers, is there any other first-time speakers? You'd like to have an opportunity to speak? Please proceed. State your name and your address, please.
Steve DePalma, 9 Highway Drive. Steve DePalma? Yes. 9 Highway Drive. Okay, okay. Listen, I've been here many, many years in this town, and I haven't been going to budgets meetings. I haven't been going to town council meetings, but one thing I could say is that we pay a lot of taxes as a homeowner, and not just for me, I mean other people, the residents. We just want to make sure we're getting the bang for the buck, and I mean like potholes. Are the pensions being funded? You know, the teachers' pensions and the, let's say, the policemen's pensions, are they adequately funded? Are you investing the money wisely where they get a return on it and so we can make these obligations going in the future? Now, one other thing I'd like to say is, why do we whack businesses, commercial and industrial things, at a higher rate than residential? They use none of the services. They don't, they have their own trash pickup, they don't send kids to school, but we take advantage of them. We should be pro-business. They'll come in and they'll pay taxes at a fair rate. Really, somebody's gonna take that leap? It's cheap. If you have a piece of property and you can't rent it out, let's say you're a landlord, it almost pays for you to knock it down rather than paying the taxes if it's unoccupied. You assume a business makes a profit. Some years, they don't make a profit. The utilities are there, the taxes are there. You're just gonna do the maintenance on the buildings themselves. You assume that every business makes a profit. It doesn't always happen that way. It's nice when they do, but they employ people when they're thriving. So, keep their tax rate lower. Lower those tax rates on the businesses in this town.
Thank you. Would you like to have an opportunity to speak, sir? Please proceed.
My name's Timothy Chase. I live at 3 Winterberry Drive. My comment, I've been listening to a few things, so I have three or four things that I want to say, but the first thing that I'm thinking about is, I know there are people that feel they don't have a dog in the race here because they don't have children in school, they don't have grandchildren in school, et cetera, but I think when you look back on your life and you look at the house that you live in right now and the level of achievement that you had in your life, that probably came as a direct result of the quality of education that you had and the opportunities that you had coming along the way. So, I think when we think about a community, we have a collective responsibility as a community to support our kids and to give people opportunities for a good education and an opportunity to live at least the same level that you have as well. And when I'm listening to conversations about the teachers' starting salary is too high or they're at top step, you gotta understand that these are highly educated people. So, you can't compare a $40,000, you know, medium income for a beginning teacher who has a master's degree, who's worked a number of years for free learning their craft before they came up to be a teacher. It's a very highly educated position, and they continue every single year to get more and more schooling as they go, and that comes at their own expense. In terms of pension, these teachers are paying 10% of their salary for their entire careers into an account that the rules changed, the governor changed the pension plan. So, what's happening is now more and more teachers have to stay more and more years, so now you have more and more top-step teachers that are costing you more money where they used to have five, six, 10 teachers a year retiring, they're not retiring. So, you're not getting that big savings of bringing in that $40,000 teacher to replace that $8,000 teacher. This goes beyond the town council and the school committee. This is happening at the state level. The state's not funding schools appropriately. The state messing with the pension plan is creating a big problem, and all they can do is open up a newspaper. Every single town in Rhode Island is in the same boat right now. So, changes have to happen above us, but at the same time here, we have a collective responsibility to our kids, to support the kids in the school, to give them opportunities to learn and to be successful, and that's just the way it is, in my opinion. I lived in town for 21 years. The first seven years I was here, I didn't have any kids, but I recognized the sacrifices my parents made and the taxpayers in Warwick where I was growing up made to allow me to have a good education, to go on and be successful in college. So, I'm hoping that we're able to do the same thing for our kids.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other speakers, first-time speakers that would like to have an opportunity to speak? Please proceed to the podium. Would you like to have an opportunity?
Yes.
Do you have one of the green things on? There you go.
It's under my many layers.
There you go.
Sue Lyons, 103 Wood Cove Drive. I spoke last time, and I'm not going to repeat myself at all. I was very motivated, and I wanted to follow the gentleman that just spoke because he spoke a lot about the contributions of the school department, which I completely agree with. I want to say that having been a resident here for more than 30 years, that the other part of our world, the recreation department, all of that contributes to the success of our children. We are one, and our children are really important. Our grown-ups are very important, our parents are very important. I've had the privilege not only to live here and to raise children, and now to see my grandchildren, and also to work for this school department. I work with some of the most fragile children in the district. I see some wonderfully excited children that we are able to grow up as a result of our recreation programs, our school department, as a result of the fact that Coventry can be a fabulous place, and we need to keep it that way.
Thank you. Would you like to have an opportunity to speak? Proceed.
Anthony Manjorelli, 64 Ginger Trail. So, here are audible pensions tonight. I'm a certified public accountant who holds a Master's of Science in Taxation. I can read an actuary report inside note. Does anyone know what our annual total pension contribution was for this year? $14 million. It's up about a million dollars over last year, so when people say we need to have a budget, it's tough to have a budget when there's a lot of inputs that go into what that amount is, and you don't know where you're gonna end up. So we took a million-dollar hit this year, just on the increase in the pensions.
It's a state.
We can't do anything about the teachers' pension that's at the state level, but the police pension is at the town level. Does anyone know what the unfunded liability is in the police pension?
I don't even know.
Let me give you an idea of how pensions work. This gentleman, thank you for all you do, they do a great job around the town, they get paid their compensation, but they also earn a benefit to be paid forty years from now, thirty years from now, whatever it is. The town's supposed to put money aside in an investment account that goes up to pay them years from now. As of today, the last actuary report, the police pension had twelve million dollars in it. It owes seventy-five million. Sixty-two million of that seventy-five million is for retirees currently collecting their pensions. That sixty-two million liability can be funded with those twelve-million-dollar assets, but there's a fifty-million-dollar shortfall. That did not come from last year or the year before, that came from decades and decades and decades of not properly funding the pension.
Nineteen eighty-six.
When was the last time the town did not fund the minimum annual required contribution on the police pension?
It's at least five years, we have been meeting the ARC every year.
Two thousand thirteen, and if you look at the report that's going around on social media, that was a year where we were level-funded. So the actuary said you need to fund the police pension, four-point-eight million, and we put three-point-two million in, because we wanted to pay lower taxes. That is going to hurt us ten years from now, five years from now, forty years from now. We have to fund the increase, because what's happening is that we're getting reduced services today to pay for the sins of twenty, thirty years ago.
Mr. Mangerelli, just one correction on that, okay? As far as, we know it was three-point-eight.
That particular year was the, part of the ramp-up to get to the one-hundred percent that we had made the agreement with the state of Rhode Island. When we made, when we made the, sat down, made the agreement and tw, started in twenty-twelve, by the time the final agreement was in twenty-fourteen, it was part of the ramp-up to get there. And so from, uh, from that point, I believe the year after that, so twenty, uh, the, uh, the twenty-fourteen and fifteen year, we have paid a hundred percent of the ARC payments on there.
No argument.
Yeah. But, but like you said, that was the reason, because we didn't just put it all in.
Fifteen seconds, or you could have an opportunity to speak later.
We ramped, we ramped up to that amount, and we've been, and we've been paying a hundred percent each year since.
Okay, do you have one more question?
One more question. How much of the five million dollars approximately went to the police pension this year, went out to retirees? Four million dollars. So we're funding that sixty-million-dollar liability at a million dollars a year, and we don't wanna fund education when our kids are gonna be the ones that are gonna finally be the ones to pay off this liability. Thank you.
Thank you. Other first-time speakers, anybody like to have the opportunity to speak? Seeing no other first-time speakers coming forward, others, people that want a second bite at the apple, please proceed.
I would, uh, I would defer to any of our state representatives that are here this evening, they can tell us what they're doing in the state to help us, is anybody, they wanna speak?
Um, I don't know, John, I don't see anybody that, that pertain to this budget at hand.
I've never seen them here.
Okay.
Okay. Um, one of the reasons, uh, Mr. Manager, that people don't come to your hearings, the contracts are all signed, what should they come for? What are their input? Now, I tried to ask a question to the, um, school committee regarding, uh, who negotiated, et cetera, they wanted to answer my reply, I had to get an attorney to get the answer. So who's gonna go to their meetings and talk to them? It's taken two years for you, and, not you, but you and I believe in the treasurer got together to say, get off your ass on these, uh, properties that we have out there that could probably bring in a half a million dollars. Our attorney with the tax collector knew about this a year ago, and I was told, that's the way it is, these properties can never be sold, so this is not only about schools, this is about ridiculous ideas that people come before you and their input means something. Or you go before the school committee and their input means something. So we're in trouble, and people know that. And I've never disrespected a teacher socially, privately, or on the internet, I wanna make that clear. If you think so, then show me.
Okay.
So, um, I guess that's, that's, that's pretty much it. It's gonna be, one thing's for sure, it is gonna be one heck of a turnout. Uh, last but not least, if I may.
If you may, you got forty-five seconds, John.
Well, wasted money. I came to your solicitor, willing to fund an improvement of a hundred homes for sewers for the bubble. Right now, the town collects forty-thousand dollars a year in maintenance fees for sewers that I put in, and I said, Nick, how much you gonna charge? It was around three thousand dollars. He said sixty-five hundred dollars each, when the bottom line is, the more money that goes in to your sewer fund, goes into the maintenance fund that these people don't have to pay. That's what you're dealing with, and it's about time, you wanna make a comment on that, Nick?
No, no, well, I, I think we're gonna keep it to the budget, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna keep it to the budget. Okay. Are there any other second-time speakers? Do you like to have an opportu, are you a first-time, did you have an opportunity to speak earlier, I forget? So you'd like to have an opportunity, you haven't spoke, please proceed. And I will get to you for a second time, and then I think we're ready to close, right? Yeah? Okay. So we'll do this and that, and, did you wanna have an opportunity to speak as well? Okay, so we'll do the three of you, and then I can go home and take a nap. Let's proceed.
James LeBlank, forty-three Hazard Street. Hazard Street, I'll try to keep it brief. Uh, question number one, I received a flyer in the mail, and it said, keep trash pickup. I just wanna ask the town manager, if the budget gets rejected, will I be able to keep my regular trash pickup on a weekly basis?
Yes, you will. Well, you will not pick up.
I understand, I, I just, regular trash pickup will not be affected, correct?
Correct.
I appreciate that, thank you. Um, Mr. Assalone asked about, um, how much debt this town is in. I, I did an APPA request, and I received a PFM debt summary, are you, you understand what that is?
I know exactly what it is, sir.
I, I have, as of-
I just don't happen to have it in front of me.
I understand, uh, June thirtieth of two thousand seventeen was the most recent that I had received. Uh, this town is in debt seventy-one-point-six million dollars. Of that seventy-one-point-six million, we owe twenty-five-point-three million related to the sewer. I have not heard one person come up to a mic tonight and beg for sewers and say that that's a priority. I hear everybody saying that they wanna fund the schools. I would love to be able to fund the schools, but my street is one of the streets that has been selected for sewers, and there's a sewer assessment that obviously, obviously is up in the air, but what I've received through APPA requests is between twenty and thirty-thousand, plus a six-percent note over twenty years currently, plus I have to pay to tie in, plus I have to pay to decommission my system. I don't know where I would have extra money to fund the schools. So I just think that the town council needs to get priorities straight, no one is asking for sewers, it needs to stop. You had made a public comment on Facebook that says that, uh, you want to, um, be able to continue the sewer for commercial purposes. So my question here, is the plan to go into residential areas, and if so, when?
There is, the sewer memoratorium, even though it is expired, is still effectively in effect, we have done nothing on making any improvements on the, moving into anywhere with the sewers. Any decision on that will come from the council, right? My comment was about that, I would prefer not to go on that, that route, I'd prefer to see it go industrial, commercial, that's my opinion. Again, the council will make that decision as we move forward in taking care of things.
I just think that it should be memorialized, not just a town manager, because as you know, you're the interim, and if we get a new one, they can instantly say, yep, I'm gonna go right into the residential areas. So I think as a town council, it should be memorialized.
Well, that is a decision up to the council, and that is something that we may or may not be putting up, along with several other proposals in the very near future in reference to the sewers.
Which are items that generally are handled outside of the, the budget process today.
Thank you.
Uh, there is two hundred thousand for sewers.
Okay. Nine seconds, you got anything else? Okay. Um, I'm gonna switch, I'm gonna switch orders, she's gonna speak first, and then you'll have an opportunity, you're all set? Last speaker. Okay, you yield the floor, please proceed.
Charles Vokker, one-two-four Fairway Drive. I can't emphasize enough, this is not about any dislike or refusal to fund certain sectors. Everybody, a lot of people come to these meetings, I know they wanna beat up on the teachers. I have a couple of siblings who are teachers, I'm actually a licensed teacher in Massachusetts, okay? It's how we do business. You know, one of the members who will go, will remain unnamed on the town council, actually wrote a letter to the editor, please pass the budget before the last time we rejected the budget. And then, okay, yeah, all right, you know? And, and, I will tell you, and, and I, I give her credit for her service to the community. Um, but I, and we can agree to disagree. No, it's not a case of approve the budget and we'll do things differently next time around. I've lived here for twenty years, I've heard that for twenty years. We've gotta do things differently now, N-O-W. And I, and I implore everybody up on the stage to do things differently, and it's not a matter of coming here and beating up on people, and it's not a matter of not properly funding our kids' education. Believe me, I'm big on education. You know, I, I'm very fortunate in life, I'm very, very educated, a lot of people here are very, very educated, and I feel sorry for people that are not as much educated, okay? Because they didn't have that opportunity. That doesn't make them a lesser person, though, all right? So we've gotta do business differently, and we've gotta start doing it now. There's been a lot of great ideas, who came up here, one of the gentlemen's with these, uh, pension figures. Wow, we could really use him in town, because our pensions are, are like providence, we're on the brink of insolvency.
Thirty seconds.
We're going broke.
Thirty seconds.
All right? Thank you.
Thank you. Last speaker, please proceed. State your name and address, please.
Janice Stenson, six-seven Denali Road. Gentlemen, I'm, I do support schools, I'm not gonna speak about the school half at this time, because I would need to actually research a whole lot more, but.
Time's up, just kidding.
I didn't hear you. There are pros and cons to voting yes and voting no on this budget. I don't believe anyone here truly wants this town to fail. There are numbers floating back and forth, some truthful, some not, there are what-ifs, there are motions flying high, very high, on both extremes. One constant that can be heard regardless of the polarized sides, one of those constants has to do with trust. One simple word, trust. Trust has been lost. Now, that doesn't happen overnight, and it was lost for so many reasons, some have already spoken about some of it, they've already been mentioning it, I don't think we need to rehash all of that. But bottom line, you are asking taxpayers to hand over millions of dollars, millions of dollars, and at least on the municipal side, to a body that no longer has trust. I know if I'm hiring someone to do work or, or a service in my home, I have to be able to trust a cer, have a certain amount of trust in that person, some confidence that that job is gonna be done correctly, efficiently, and that that hired contractor or service person has listened to me. I need trust, that there is a clear plan, trust that what con, the contractor said was going to happen does indeed happen. Now, without blaming past town councils, as we've heard before, without blaming past town councils, because as, as you are representing the town council now, each and every one of you, not only are you a part of our community, you must also own the good and the bad of the body you serve, both current and past. So I ask first, will you, each and every one of you, speak up individually, assume responsibility for the good and bad of all collective town councils and our community, profess publicly to work with the community to develop trust again with the people that put you there on that stage? I ask each one of you to speak up this evening, acknowledge we have a trust issue, tell us how you will work to remedy that going forward.
We have about ten seconds.
Let us at least have that going into this vote on Thursday, if you want it to succeed. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Labazanam.
Thank you. Uh, it takes a village, that's, that's a great saying, it takes a village, and it truly does. Uh, I look back on my time in this town, I've been here since nineteen ninety, twenty-nine years, raised two children here, and I wanna put it in perspective. Uh, two children, uh, first through twelfth grade is twenty-four years, and let's take an average of, uh, ten thousand dollars per student cost over that time, so that, for each of those students in that two years was twenty thousand dollars, my taxes average five thousand dollars. So if I'm, I've educated them for twelve years each, that's two-hundred-forty thousand dollars. My taxes are five, I'm, I've been here twenty-nine years, I still have eleven more years to go in this town to pay back the education that the people of the town of Coventry educated my children. Thank you taxpayers for helping me educate my kids, because they're both doing very well, one is a teacher, and the other one is, and they're both college-educated due to the education in this town. We haven't even talked about the other services that happen here, you know, that, that, that we are provided in this town, that's just the education. So, uh, anybody who does have students, again, it's just that, there's expenses that need to be made, and there's costs for, for everything. Uh, I don't know why anybody's expectations are that costs are gonna be going down, uh, because they're going up. And, uh, this body, and I wanna thank my colleagues on the council, on the school committee, et cetera, uh, because the most important commodity is time, and we've given up a, a lot of time, as have a lot of other people in the public service, and, and I was so happy to hear that, uh, some people wanna get involved in our town and our community, because it is our community. The council can't do it all alone, never could, never will, but, uh, I, uh, and if you wanna hear my, I supported the budget the first time around, I'll support it, as though as I, I have my apprehensions and my concerns, and I stated those, but I'm still gonna support this budget, thank you.
Any further discussion, council members?
Yeah, I'd like to make-
Mr. President.
Yeah, I'd like to just make a quick comment, uh, this council has worked diligently to try to do the best, I know you don't wanna hear there's sins of the past, it, this has been happening for years and years, it's not gonna happen overnight, I stated that at the meeting last night, at our council meeting, that there's a lot of work we put into this budget, no matter what decisions made, not everybody's gonna be happy. We worked hard to try to make it work, I, I'm for this budget, I'm gonna vote for the budget, I, I mean, if you don't trust us, you don't trust us, I can't change your opinion, we're working hard to make this budget work and to make the town work, and there's a lot of issues we have, and we've been dealing with them, we're, I've been on the council for eight years now, we've been dealing with them. Excuse me, I am voting for the budget, I support the budget, I support the teachers in every, every aspect, the municipal side, I, I support them, I don't like taxes going up either, I pay, I'm not exempt from when we have a tax increase, I also pay the taxes. So I encourage, I don't care how anybody votes, I'm supporting the budget, I just want to see people out to vote. I do not wanna see eight percent of our taxpayers making a decision for thirty-five-thousand people in this town. Let's get out and vote, vote whatever way you want, we work for the people, if you vote this budget down, we'll do accordingly, it's not gonna be nice, but we'll do whatever the taxpayers want, but please get out and vote, thank you.
Dr. Dixon, did you wanna have a chance? Councilwoman Bacon, would you, did you wanna have an opportunity afterwards?
I think the question that was asked by the speaker was what each of us individually are going to do to earn trust, is that correct? Is that the question?
Yes, that was a question, please proceed.
That was the question. Um, actually, when I reinforce, uh, town council, um, part of my campaign was the fact that I believe there was a lack of trust of our leadership at the, um, municipal level, and I talked to people about it as I went door to door, because I did perceive that there was a lack of trust and a lack of communication. And I spoke to people, and when I brought up the subject, people were very, either reticent about what they meant by lack of trust, they were just angry, um, people don't necessarily know what they're angry about or what they wanna do to have it fixed, um, but there was some acknowledgement that there was a lack of trust. But I still proceeded to run my campaign because I felt a great sense of the need to serve the community, I feel very attached to community, I have been a volunteer service worker my entire adult life, as I had a full-time job, I always provided service, I feel very committed to that. So some of the things I did when I first was elected was I immediately had two town halls, which I was able to held, hold at the West Coventry, uh, Western Coventry Fire Station, and we had about twelve to fifteen people come, it wasn't very big, but at least we were able to start that dialogue. Um, our other councilman Greg had two town hall, four town halls, and I was invited to two of them, and I participated with him, and we had basically four to six people. So we're trying very hard to create a dialogue, it doesn't always work, but we keep on going. Um, I've also, um, immediately, uh, volunteered to work on the manager's, um, Citizens Advisory Council, he said he wanted to start one, I immediately raised my hand because I wanted to do that. I do answer every single email that I get and every single telephone call, I write regularly on Facebook, and I also use Nextdoor, which goes to the summit area or the Western Coventry area, and I'm trying to keep the people in my district well-informed of what's going on. Uh, one, uh, morning I received a call- One morning I received a call, a couple of emails from people saying that there was some activity going on at a solar farm and I literally dropped everything I was doing, got my camera and ran out to the site to take pictures and then posted them so that people would know what was going on. So I've been trying very hard through communicating with people to gain that trust in my district and hope, hopefully that will spread and they will begin to trust the members of the council. You'll also note that when I am at a council meeting, I always ask questions. I don't try to put people on the spot, but I ask questions. Sometimes I know the answer to the question, but I want to make sure that the people who are listening to us or sitting in the audience get full information. So those are the kinds of things that I'm doing to build trust in, as a council person and I hope that this will be recognized as the days and months go on. I know that this is not something that happens overnight and it will take a long time to do, but I feel that being consistent in my approach will reap a lot of benefits as we go along. So I hope that answers your question.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bacon?
Hi, Janice. Thank you. I know you and I discussed last night also about trust and one of the issues is trying to get the supporting documentation. When we do have our agendas, we have, have all those documents available. I will be continuing to ask that all those supporting documentations be included in the packets along with the public agenda packet. I will also, like Ms. Dixon, we will be asking questions and continue. I a lot of time, I do know the answer a lot of times, but sometimes the, the people in the audience don't know, so that's why we ask those questions, that way you know. But I will continue and after the meeting last night, you came up, you brought me all your concerns that you had and I do appreciate it. And I believe it's Kimberly who I believe, you said you're gonna volunteer. Thank you so much. I really appreciate that, it's wonderful. And I also would like to be on that committee as a second council person if that's okay, Ed. But moving forward.
I'll be doing interviews on that later. All right, so we're at that point where we end the public comment and the only thing that's left to do is to vote, which is June 13th and it starts at 7:00 in the morning to 8 o'clock, so make sure you know your polling places. That ends the public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed.